To call the order, the monthly advertised stated meeting of the lower township board of commissioners, January 11th, 2022, please rise for the pledge. Public participation on agenda items will be taken as each item is discussed and also at the end of the meeting. First is internal affairs committee under item A, review and consider minutes of December 14th, 2021. Any commissioners have any corrections? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 14th, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve the minutes, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I said thank you. Under item B, review and consider January 2022 bill list. Any commissioners have any comments or questions? Any questions from the public about the published bill list? Hearing none, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 2022 bill list.
Second.
Has been motioned and second to approve the January 2022 bill list, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just haven't, thank you. Review, under item C, review and consider vehicle leasing slash financing proposals. Assistant manager Lee, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, I'll make it very brief.
And if I could ask, could you explain to the public why we're taking this strategy versus other options as well? We're outright buying things like that.
Sure, great. So there are two police vehicles currently up that are in need of being purchased, two police vehicles. And the total cost of those comes out to a little over $90,000. The township, I believe, three years ago was the first time we went out to actually finance the vehicles and this really is, I know the title of it is called a leasing, but really it's a financing option. To be able to spread those costs over three years, really two, because we put a down payment. But really, we've kind of reached out to different banks to get an idea of what different interests were available for financing, multiple vehicles, not just one, and prices came back where interest rates were below 3%. We put a down payment for the first payment and spread those payments over two years and it ends up costing about a little, about $31,000 a year to purchase both vehicles out of us. So the township gets the benefit of getting the vehicles upfront and then spreading those costs with minimal interest over the next two years. The first time we did this was when I first started here, about a year and a half ago. The savings was pretty significant with the low interest rates. The township was able to obtain four vehicles upfront with only $30,000 down and then spread the rest of the payments over the following two years. It's worked out well. We did the same thing, the interest were even lower this time around. And so we are asking the board to take this approach again, as it was a very positive experience the first time.
Great, thank you for the nice summary. Any questions from the board about the vehicle leasing slash financing proposals? Any questions from the public? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vehicle leasing slash financing proposals as stated.
Second.
It has been motioned and second to approve the vehicle leasing financing proposals, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it, thank you. Under item D, review and consider tax collection committee delegates, manager Hoffman, if you want to tackle that one.
Sure, so just a brief description for that, is that based off of the board's reorganization last week, the tax collection committee requires three delegates, a primary voting and then first and second alternates. And we are members of the tax collection committee because there's a countywide collection of earned income tax, that entity appoints Burkhymmer, they collect their earned income tax on behalf of the township and school district. Burkhymmer then remits those ones to us. So following the township's established program, we would have me continue as the primary voting delegate. Commissioner Sorkin as the first alternate in his capacity as president and Commissioner Currits as the second alternate in her capacity as vice president. And if that concept is agreeable to the board, there's a attached resolution, which is number 22-13, which would nominate those officers for the tax collection.
Great. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Is this by a simple motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, but no resolution number?
22-13.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 22-13 as described.
Second.
Has been motioned and second to approve resolution number 22-13, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it, thank you. Under item E, review and consider bank signature resolutions, manager Hoffman, if you'd be kind enough to tackle that one as well.
Sure, so again, this is another one following up on reorganization. So the township has accounts with three different banks. Two of them are going to require resolutions and one of them is just a simple motion, so we'll need three individual votes. So the first is TD Bank, where we have our general fund, that's the bulk of the township's money. And we also have our payroll account, which really is just a pass through account where when payroll is authorized, money leaves, the general fund goes into payroll and gets distributed for direct deposit. So this would establish the check signers as Commissioner Sorkin, Commissioner Currits, me, EJ, and Chief Scorato. We add the chief, not because we overly trust the way that he was trying to spend money given the opportunity, but just in the event that there's something in our internal procedures that would require either me to not sign because say it's a reimbursement to me or EJ to not sign because she had cut the checks, whatever that answer is, to have another option internal, it's helpful. So those check signers are established on resolution number 22-14. And then the next is our accounts at Pliggett, we actually have very minimal funds left there because we had transferred those capital monies over to Huntington Valley Bank recently. But we do keep the account active in the event we ever need to transfer funds there. That one does not require the extra signer in the chief. So there's a resolution, which is number 22-15, which would authorize Commissioner Sorkin, Commissioner Currits, me and EJ as the signers for that account. And then the last one is Huntington Valley Bank, which as I just said, is where we had transferred some of those capital funds in recent years. The four that I just mentioned for Pliggett are listed as the signers there, but we do need to remove Commissioner McQueen from there. So that one, we can just do by motion and that would reestablish that just those four checks on us as described would be the signers for the Huntington Valley Bank account. So the three necessary motions are detailed at the bottom of EJ's note.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Then I'll do one at a time, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 22-14, authorizing the check signers for TD Bank as described.
Second.
Has been motioned and second to approve resolution number 22-14, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it, thank you. Next is resolution number 22-15, authorizing the check signer for the Pliggett account as described. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution for 22-15, second. Has been motioned and second to approve resolution number 22-15 as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it, thank you. The last is just simple motion to approve the list of the new check signers for the Huntington Valley Bank as described. I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Has been motioned and second to approve the check signers for Huntington Valley Bank account as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it, thank you. Under item F, administration board manager Hoffman.
So the only two updates that I have for this evening, unless there are any questions, have to do with the stacks of paper that I've presented in front of you this evening. So just to let everybody know, we did receive the final plan submission for the Philmont Country Club development. As a reminder, that's the 176 age restricted townhouses on the south course of Philmont Country Club. So we do have those electronically, so feel free to do with those what you feel like is appropriate. And then also just wanted to point out in your folders, which at the end of the meeting, if you don't mind leaving the folders, in there I do have two other things. One is that our 2020 financial statements have been issued, so there's a copy of those in the folder for you to take. And then also we did receive from the state, the 2022 ethics forms for the 2021 year. So if you can please fill those out in return to me at your earliest convenience, I would appreciate that. And unless there's any other specific questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for the manager, from the board?
Where are we, the PBA negotiations?
I do not have any new update since last meeting. So the one kind of topic that the PBA has told us that remains important to them, my feedback at the time was that that requires more comprehensive research into other contracts than we had done up to this point. We were trying to leave the scope just within kind of the good faith of Lower Moreland and their PBA. So now that we are almost through the January meeting and some of the other administrative tasks that come along with the beginning of the year, that research will hopefully start by say Thursday and then I will be able to schedule a meeting to either acknowledge that the PBA has a great point and that I was wrong all along or that there's maybe not a basis for the thing that they're requesting, we'll see where the negotiation goes.
Okay, so are they working without a contract now or?
So the terms of the existing agreement continue. In the event that we're not able to make progress and in all legitimacy, the good faith of these negotiations has been strong. The communication has been very direct and I honestly could not ask for anything more in that regard from the negotiating committee. That said, in the event that either party ends up determining, you know what, we're just not making enough progress, Act 111 provides for binding arbitration. So in the event that we don't make progress, we'll then instead go on a path towards the arbitration. And much earlier, I guess it was, I forget if it's a date in June or September, but we each had to memorialize the list of issues that we would each take to a hypothetical arbitration hearing. So all of that has been established and it's within the confines of the items that were still negotiated. So there's nothing more that would get pulled into that hypothetical process.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for the board from manager and any from the public? Hearing none, assistant manager Lee.
Just operationally, a lot of year end reports to be filed, I submitted my report and lots of new year 2022 financial information to file. Internally with HR, there were two new hires, one seasonal staff with Public Works and a new police officer, the one that was sworn in at the reorganizational meeting, Officer McBride, this process. And then the only other item is the winter newsletter, I am currently on my third draft and as soon as I have a more finalized稿, I'll circulate it to the rest of you for review prior to finalizing and going to print, hopefully within the next two weeks.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the assistant manager? On board or for the public? Okay, thank you. Next is item G, tax collector's report, and we have our elected tax collector online with us. Tax collector, Sal? It was still muted.
I hit the wrong button, sorry. It's the year end, the taxes have mostly been collected. For face collection, we've reached 99.32%. For the actual collections, which includes the discounts and the penalty amounts, we've reached 97.79%. This year for liens, we will be leaning $38,426 in township taxes for the tax claim bureau to collect and the trash, the outstanding trash fees are $8,750 for the year. So it is a slightly less than last year, which is a good sign.
Any? Questions for the tax collector? Any questions from the public for the tax collector? Then hearing none, I'd like to request that the tax collector's report be accepted as submitted, thank you. Under item H, my liaison report, I continue to attend the school board meetings virtually and we haven't had a recent civil service commission meeting since our last meeting. And that completes the internal affairs committee. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Currits, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you Chairman Dr. Sorkin, happy new year to everybody and happy and healthy. Everyone stay safe. First item on my agenda is the building officials report. And there were 55 permits issued for December, year to date. A thousand permits were collected. Last year to date, 915 permits were collected. Even though more permits were collected this year, the grand total collected was less by $14,173.50, just wanted to point that out. We had 134 inspections by type and 25 complaint violation notices. And there's a lot of calls and onsite visits and follow-ups. I always mention that because there's a lot more that goes into what's actually goes into our reports and what's on the page. Use and occupancies for December, we had three business use and occupancies and seven construction use and occupancies. Does the board have any questions about anything, all of the reports that are in the building officials? Report department, that is always so nicely done and I'm not sure if Bob Schadig's there, but if he is in the back of the room, if anyone has any questions for Bob? No questions? If there aren't any questions from the board, does the public have any questions regarding any matters even in their ward? Not sure how many public you have there, I see, see one or two? From my view.
Denise does not look, we have any questions?
Well, again, I'm going to accept all these reports as submitted and I'm pretty much have a pretty light agenda tonight. The next item on my agenda is my liaison report. So my liaison positions are the planning commission and community events. We are going to have a January planning commission meeting and it's scheduled for Thursday, January 27th at 7:00 PM. And it's to review the subdivision application, which is subdivision 34-01. It's a two lot subdivision and it is 1355 Grasshopper Road in Ward 1, so that is what is on the planning commission agenda for this month. Are there any questions from the board regarding this matter? Don't see anybody. Any questions from the public? Doc? Or anyone on Zoom, EJ?
I do not see anyone on Zoom with any questions.
Good shape there, so I'll go on to community events. The school district once again reached out and this has been for two years, we haven't, you know, they haven't been able to have an event. And they reached out to us as the township with, to ask for assistance with regard to trying to plan a Martin Luther King Day event with the kids. I personally always enjoy working with the principal at the high school and the kids for these events. So to, you know, Chris and Steve Werner and I have discussed things and due to the rise in the COVID-19 cases, it was recommended to the district and Mr. Miles that we have an outdoor event and discuss that Valley Center Park will be a great, great place. Placing more wood chips along the trail. And I asked Mr. Miles what time he thought, so he would like to do it at 10 o'clock. It really shouldn't go more than an hour or two. And Sandy Oshlin reached out to me actually today and said they have about 20 students. So I think, you know, we have about five, six adults and we should be able to break them up into small groups, mast and distance, and it should be a great project, assuming we don't get snow on Saturday. So that's what we have going on with community events to try to help out. I reached out to my group and I'm going to send another email to see. So for, far past Commissioner Blumheart, actually sent me an email back right away, said that she would help out, weather permitting and as long as we're a go and I'll keep in touch with her. Next, I did highlight and reach out to my events volunteers and just, you know, gave, sent a quick menu memo, email and memo about events that I feel that were, we will be highlighting, which will be primarily into the new year between now and the spring will be outdoor events. And I also had an opportunity to speak to Pam Doll, her and I have been speaking since September, October. She also hasn't been able to do her spring egg hunt for two years, so she is very, very excited. She actually has all the eggs, the bunny suits, everything ready in the old youth center closet. And I had organized that with Mr. Bellemo about a month or so ago. So she's excited and I had talked to Ellie O'Brien at HVA to say if we can have an event like this, you know, checking with the township and emergency management. You know, my suggestion was a great location will be Lower Moreland Park and HVA is having their home opener, opening day, the second week of April. So I reached out to her and she said the first week of April will be great and Pam and Vanessa think that's, that, that weekend will work. So assuming we can move forward with this event, we're blocked off for the first week of April, so let's keep our fingers crossed. And the other event that was highlighted is our Earth Day event, which was very successful last year. It was held at the Public Works Department where residents had an opportunity to actually see the Public Works site, which so many residents were so, so excited, just, you know, I don't think anybody in our township is, unless they call or have to take something down, a lot of people don't really frequent the Public Works site. So between the Halloween event and previous to that, the Earth Day event, people are really, it's an, it's an awareness of what goes on at Public Works and with Public Works, they're in a very important department in our township. So we had that, well, I spoke to Steve and EJ and, and Steve and I and then EJ will, will all talk to the staff and figure out, like I said, if we can move forward with this, but it was a drive up and I think that's something we can also do this year with regard to and, and encourage all our residents to continue to drop off any electronics with a plug on that day also. We gave out some great, we gave out, you know, some great kits and informational materials for the residents, so. And then Steve Werner and I actually just today received an email from the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society about the spring tree planting. So that is something that we haven't really done either for a few years, the spring planting. So, you know, that's also around Earth Day, Earth Day is April 22nd and the trees are coming in from the 19th to the 22nd. So keep it staying, you know, hopeful that we can have this, maybe we were, you know, we'll talk, I'll talk to Steve and EJ and my group of volunteers, maybe we'll, we'll have a little incorporation of, of kind of both events in a few, in a few days and it'll be fun for the community, of course, distanced and, and as safe as we possibly can in the outdoors. So the application for that to do February 10th and Steve and Kelly, Steve usually comes back and asks, asks, asks us, you know, what, what do we want to do? Do we want to move forward with this? Maybe we'll be able to do this this year. We haven't done the spring or we have done the spring, but not open to residents. So they've been kind of just planning them due to safety. So as always, these are the, the events and our Halloween event was severely very, very, very successful. So just to give everybody the heads up, EJ, EJ and I already planned and picked a date for next year, which is Saturday, October 22nd, 2022. So we'll try to make sure everybody love that event and they'll keep that on their calendar. And again, I'll talk to the group to see if they want to plan a spring summer event or coordinate something with the library for their, they have, they have a few events that they try to have people, you know, sign up for library cards and whatnot. I'm not trying to steal Joe Canelli's agenda item, but this is like community events, but it's still a lot of his stuff too. So sorry, Joe, I'm just giving everybody an overview because this is a real short agenda tonight. So, and it's exciting. With positiveness, positiveness. Good night and that's it, that concludes my agenda for tonight.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Currits. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee. First item we like to talk about is the review of the 2022 root pavement programs. Steve, are you online, ready to discuss?
Sure thing. I think Chris, you should have the memo, these are roads that I'm recommending we do this year, the, the base bid. And then there's four alternates plus Bernath and Borough would like to bid with us again. You have the roads, do you want me to read the roads off or?
Yes, Steve, go for it, just to give a quick summary of the base and then the importance. And then if that's agreeable to the board, then it would just be a motion to fall for us.
Okay, for the, for the base bid I'm recommending, we do a short lane, Summers Drive and Road, Dempsey Lane, Willard, Abidale Drive, Wright Drive on the Abidale side, that would be Huntington Pike to Abidale Drive, Midvale Lane, Bob White Lane, Creek Road from Byberry to the Dead End. That also is a shared road with Bernathen, so they'll, they'll pick up part of that and Eden Crawford. When I did my estimates, that's going to be pretty close to our budgeted number, but we always like to put some alternates in and hopefully that we can squeeze one or two in. Hopefully we'll get some good pricing. So Killdeer Lane and then Redborn, Brayborn, the piece that runs between Byberry and Pine and then Jefferson Lake. So those are the roads I'd recommend we put at the bid this year.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion for, questions from the board, questions from the public. Question from the boards? Question from the public? All right, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the bidding of the 2022 resurfacing project that Steve described.
Second.
Has been motioned and second to authorize the bidding of the 2022 resurfacing project as described, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait on number two, Steve, if you're ready again, we're going to go through the Public Works Department report.
Okay, it's a little lengthy, I don't know if anyone has any questions, I'll highlight a couple of things if you want. I did discuss before leaf collection went very smoothly this year. We finished on time, I think everyone had a minimum of six pickups. So we had ample pickups, there was no complaints, everything was on time, the weather really cooperated. We started the, in the, with the 2022 budget, you guys had approved some money to take care of the, the ugly looking trees on Huntington Pike. And with the, the nice weather, I was able to get a contractor out there to, to start and he was, gave us a really good price to do a couple of large trees we couldn't do. And then with our forces, we were able to take down all the dead maples that are on the just a form side between County Line and Wright Drive. So those trees are all down, they're all cleaned up, it, it looks a lot nicer now. And if we can, we'll get in there and we'll start grinding the stumps and then I'll look at reassessing the rest of the trees along there, that area to see what we can do the remainder of this year. I always have to do our liquid fuels report, that's kind of EJ mentioned, the same thing with her. We just finished the attached wide LED conversion project, the room you're in, that, that room was changed over. So we'll see a nice savings in our electric bill, plus we'll get a nice reimbursement back from Pico for the, the bulbs. It's a, it's over a 90% replacement price they give us for the bulb, so it's, it's a good program. And we're lucky enough, we have a guy that's an electrician in house, he's able to do all that, that work for us, so we're able to do that all in-house. So we're able to do that all in-house. Say that everyone knows, I'm sure about Buck Road. Aqua will be starting tomorrow. So we'll, we'll live with it. We'll work with the school district, we'll work with Aqua, we'll work with, you know, the contractor and everyone involved to, to try to make it as easy as possible. You know, it's, it's a big water main. I think everyone knows it's a hundred year old and they're taking it out. So it'll, it'll be rough, but you know, we'll get through. And that's about it. Unless anyone has any other questions?
Hey, Steve, I have a question. The lake poles that are in some of the more established developments?
Yeah.
How, how, how's your plan to tackling some of the pain for those as it gets, as weather changes?
As soon as it gets below 50, it's, it's hit or miss. I was able to finish some on Bob White, Killdeer back in that section. What I've been doing in those sections is as we pave those roads, we'll paint the poles either before or as we're doing it. So for instance, your section Summers, Willard, Dempsey, those poles will be next. We did get Mettler done, looped on. That was all done last year, 21. So we keep picking away as best we can. When we have good weather, we can get about six or eight done in a three days. So that, that's what we're trying.
Thank you for the update. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Third item would be my liaison report. The Historical Architectural Review Board, there was no new applications filed, so there was no meeting this month. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pace. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Oger, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Good evening. Thank you. First item is decisions from the zoning hearing board. At the last meeting, there was one decision, which was on application number 21-21 from Shabbat Israeli Center Incorporated, located at 2755 Filmont Avenue. And the board granted a variance to allow a menorah as a second sign and to exceed the maximum square footage for wall signs. And there were no applications received for the January zoning hearing board meeting. Second item is liaison for the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. I've had contact with them and have an introductory meeting on January 20th with Chris Mendel. So I'm looking forward to getting up and running with them. I believe that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Oger. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Canelli, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Gerner. First up, I have Chief Serrano, your report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Through a review of my report for December of 2021, it was actually a good month with crimes against persons. We had a few harassment and disturbance cases. There were no assaults, maybe the first month this year that we didn't have any assaults. So we're happy about that. We had some thefts, catalytic converters still an ongoing problem, both in Lower Moreland and throughout the region. Other than that, not too many cases like that. Only two liquor law violations, public intoxication cases, only seven DUIs. So all in all, it was a little lighter of a month for us. We did have a series of frauds, deceptive business practices, cryptocurrency, a couple unemployment frauds towards the end of the year. And I wanted to give a couple of case updates. Thursday, September 20th, 2020, our police were dispatched with theft in progress at 600 block of Wells Road for retail establishment. Two subjects were subsequently identified by our detective division and warrants were issued on December 28th for those two people. We had a contractor fraud case from January 14th of 2021. And that case, if, well, we filed charges on a contractor to make restitution warrant was issued on, and he was arrested on December 21st. Just a couple of program notes from 2021. Our internship program, which we started back in my first year of 2019, has expanded. And despite the trials and tribulations with COVID over the last year and a half, almost two years, we still were able to have seven students from six educational institutions come through our program, completing 815 hours of learning and service to the Lower Moreland Police Department. So we're pretty proud of that. Another thing that's very important to us, our department is one of the, I believe, most highly trained organizations anywhere in the region. All police officers in Pennsylvania complete a minimum of 12 hours in-service training each year, in addition to recertifying and CPR, first aid and weapons. In this past year, our department completed a combined 2,866 hours of documented training during 2021. It's a very, we ran a lot of high level programs that really none of the other organizations have been able to mirror in our region, especially related to firearms, defensive tactics. But we brought in some really great programs like autism awareness. And we also did a program of lethality assessment screening for victims of domestic violence, which helps our officers be better able to identify victims of domestic violence and provide them resources. And also identify high risk domestic violence situations. So all really good programs. So we're really proud. The department's doing an excellent job for its community. So I'm quite proud of everybody.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you very much.
Couple things for the fire department. Wednesday night, December 1st, we went to three residents' homes in the township and did a two ways out program. We had a resident who came to the open house back in October and wanted some information on how to teach your children how to get out of a house in case of fire. So a bunch of us went over to three of these homes. We had a fantastic time. We met some really nice residents and some kids. We showed them the fire truck. We did some, we pushed some smoke detectors. We had them crawl on the floor and roll out of their beds. And we really, we had a real nice time. And I have to, have to put in here that the one resident, her and her grandmother made some homemade egg rolls. And there wasn't one left at that firehouse. They were out standing. It was really, it was very, we really, we thanked them a lot. And we've already had another additional call come out. So hopefully this program will maybe take off in the beginning of the year. We had a small fire in the 1500 block of Eaton Hill Road. We had a garage fire on the summer 4th. Company did a nice job putting the fire out. It was contained to the garage, as we spoke about the home. We had a small commercial building fire at 1681 Republic Road. Fire was basically held to the outside of a pile of bulbs, didn't extend it to the interior. We had a resident burn yard waste in 1400, 14 block, 14 Roy Lane. That was a chimney fire. We just explained, she was brand new to the neighborhood. We just explained to her what she could and could not burn. And she got most of the debris taken away. Another good program that we, the fire company had was on December 18th, Hunting Valley took two Santa Clauses and one Grinch around to greet families and children. This was almost an eight hour program. And we had a lot of good feedback from it. And like I said, we enjoyed doing that with, with our township residents. And then we also want to just pass on that. We participated in the remembrance of past fire, where the county commissioner claimed the queen. We had a ladder lodged out in front of the church and we had a good showing from our members. Under emergency management, Rich and I are still working with the county with the COVID issues. We did check our downstairs PPE and we have plenty of wipes, PPE, spray, hand sanitizer. So we're in really good shape there. And as you recall, we ordered a lot and we got a lot of stock in the past couple of months, just in case this would resurge. So we're, we're in pretty good shape with that. I've been, Rich and I have been sending out the updates to the first responders on COVID shots, COVID testing, boosted shots and so forth. And as that information comes out, we get that out to them. Couple of investigations I did with the county hazmat team and their local fire marshals during the month of December. The most serious one was the Abington House Fire on Christmas Eve afternoon. That had quite good damage. We had quite, we had, I had five or six cancellations of UNOs and inspections due to COVID into the holiday. Hopefully that will pick up. And the only other big issue that we have that Bob and I are still working on together is the Fisker Automotive up on Republic Road. We're still working on the storage of lithium batteries. They have two large containers in the back and they want to store lithium car batteries. And Bob and I are still working with Fisker out in the California office to try to make this, make this work. So we'll be updating you as that goes along. Any questions?
Marshall, can I trouble you to explain to the new commissioners and any of the public committee about UNO and what that means?
Sure. When a new business comes in to the township, they apply for a decent occupancy certificate and which requires a permit. So I get in, I get a, we have a permit procedure that gives us the name of the rest of the business, what type of business it is. It first goes to Bob Shattuck if it passes the zoning and if it's allowed to be in the township. Then, then a, if there's any permits needed for, maybe they're going to add some, maybe a room or change the bathroom or so forth. If not, or if it does, the permits are applied for it. And then I do the final inspection with Steve Pelch, fire extinguishers, two ways out, smoke alarms, fire alarms, stuff like that. Once that passes, they get to use an occupancy certificate and then they're legally involved in the township. This has been a great program for us because before we had this program, we were finding numerous illegal businesses in the area. So it keeps, it gives us an idea of what's going on in township. We pass information on to the first responders and then the information also goes to county. So if an ambulance or fire command has to get dispatched, they have the correct information for the owner of the property. And actually, the owner and of the, of the building type. Plus, we also have a good knockbox program. We're just about on pace. I think we have about, let me say 70% of the township that knocks box. Yeah, so we're doing real well with that. So, so thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I just want to reiterate that Wednesday night program you did in the area on Brookdale, the residents absolutely loved it, it sounded valuable to the kids. My kids loved it also. Thank you guys for coming.
No problem.
Any questions from the public? Thank you very much. That brings me to my liaison reports. First report's going to be for HVA. I'm working, I'm making contact with Ellie O'Brien. We've been playing phone tag with the holidays and COVID. But basketball season has started up and the kids are loving it. They're on the boards and that's great to be out there. Secondly, is on report is the library. I attended the last meeting. We have another meeting this Thursday coming up. They hired some new additional staff. They're trying to get their hours backed up, also being hit hard by COVID. Some hours are restricted from time to time. Great selection in there, a lot of information. Please go check out the library. That's all I have. Back to you, President Serra.
Thank you, Commissioner Canelli. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Howson, Chair of the Public Property Committee.
The Lower Moreland Township Authority had their quarterly meeting this month and I was there. By the skin of my teeth, but I mean it. And there were a couple of things. We, just so we know, we are way under the limits for both, for our two processing plants. They're not processing.
So it's the pump station, so what flows to Philadelphia?
The pump station flows to Philadelphia. We're way under, although we did have to file Philadelphia Water Department Exceedance Reduction Plan, which Chris and McCree and Steve worked on. And I understand it was received very well. So congratulations to you guys. Good job. There also is a 1972 agreement with Southampton concerning their flows into our system. We have well exceeded those limits over the years and it needs to be updated. So of course, we'll be working on that in the next few months. Going forward, we will be hopefully, well, probably always definitely replacing three sewage pumps. Hollow Drive, the Woodlands, Long Lane. We had originally already put aside the money for that, but now we're getting the ARCA funds, federal funds for recovery to cover that instead. So that should help us in our budgeting process going forward. We ended November, that's the quarter was September, October, November with about a million dollars. And that's what we started with. There were a couple of minor things, but nothing major. And that is the end of this report. Public Property Committee, I'm going to try to work with Chris over the next year or so to decide what we need to do with our township buildings. They have, I believe, they have exceeded their lives and will need to look at that and see renovation or reconstruction, those kind of decisions. And we'll start on that I have no other information. Does anybody have any questions? Public, any questions? I do not see any. Okay, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Howson. That completes the scheduled agenda items. We'll open up the public participation in non-agenda items.
I have one thing. Unfortunately, there are semi persistent rumors that there are commissioners benefiting from some of the construction projects here in Lower Moreland. So I'm going to suggest that we get our ethics reports in as quickly as we can on file and available for review. They are available for review, right?
Yes.
You know, and I apologize for this. I'm not creating the rumors. I'm just saying they're out there and it's annoying. I, I personally, unless they have a cure for seizure disorder, I am not benefiting from what's true project or anything else. But let's get those ethics reports in and filed. Okay?
Any other public participation? In hearing none, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's a motion and second in the journal. Is it favored? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it being adjourned.